That was so gentle.
I know. Good afternoon, the time is now 1:24 and a quorum of the board is present. The State Board of Education meeting of January 9, 2018 is called back to order. First item on the agenda is public participation in the State Board of Education meeting. Marilyn, do we have any individuals who wish to address the board today?
Yes, we have three individuals. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes to address the board. It's practice of the board not to respond to comments heard during public participation. And our first speaker is Bob Wright and the second one is Linda Cypret Kilburn and the third one is Susan Keel.
Well, I didn't know I was going to be first. I haven't even, like, barely digested my food. I'm really glad to be here and I will introduce myself. I know some of you have been here a couple of times over the last couple of years. My name's Bob Wright and I'm here to comment on the Model Code of Student Conduct. It was going to be on the agenda, I thought, but then it was taken off, but I know that there's, it's a big, it's a big thing, so. I'm a limited, I just wanted to let you know a little bit about myself. I haven't really done that before and so why this is an important thing to me. I'm a limited licensed psychologist and I've been known to occasionally provide pizza at school board meetings when there's an abundance of people who are hungry and want to comment on a policy change. It's sometimes helpful to have pizza when you have difficult things to talk about. I've been actively involved on the community and state level over many years advocating for educational and family issues. Professionally, I'm currently licensed by the state of Michigan as a limited licensed psychologist and I've served as an executive director at a multi-staff professional clinic in Ann Arbor for several years. I've also served successfully as a senior pastor for 17 years. I retired in 2012. I'm also a senior business development director at Open Box Solutions. It's an IT consulting firm in Ann Arbor. And as far as my public advocacy, I've served as co-chairman with the Lenawee County Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition, the Brit Mekon School Crisis Resource Team, the co-chairman of the Health Advisory Committee there implementing policy on a district level. I've developed and conducted substance abuse prevention school assemblies for over 2,500 high school, middle school students in Lenawee County. I've also served as a community and schools board member and facilitator with Christine McNaughton, who's the director of that. What brings me the most joy, though, is that I'm the father of five wonderfully successful grown children who all attended public school. One of them is currently a middle school science teacher, serving at an international school in Nairobi, Kenya. She served her student teaching at Kent Innovation High, which is an amazing program, and she's actually incorporated the concepts of that, of that unique teaching method into her studies in Bang, or hindered her classes in Bangladesh and also now in Nairobi. I also have a special needs adult child who's currently on disability and have navigated that whole process, continue to navigate that. I also have a private counseling practice and I'm a consultant with the Early Treatment Center in Ann Arbor. It's a psychiatric clinic doing research with schizophrenia and also severe mental illness. So as I was reading through the model, which you, it's very complete and a lot of data, you've made changes in wording and also content and I believe that it's well intentioned and it has a lot of good features and I know that you're trying to make the emphasis on positive behavior instead of highlighting negative behavior, which is a worthy goal. But I think that there's some concerns that I have as a, as a professional and also as a parent and also as a school interested party. One of the things that jumped out at me as I was reading through that is there's just a lot of pressure in the document to simply accept the premise that the desired behavioral policy theory is, is, it's just, it is what it is. I mean, it's, it's the best way, it's the only way probably, I don't know if I, I didn't count this, but I would say maybe 20 times it's repeated in that document, that this, this theory, this theory, positive behavioral theory, is the only, the best theory, the only way to deal with behavior problems in school. And personally, I don't like being told that I have to believe that this particular approach is the only right one. There are many ways to deal with this difficult issue, sure, present the view, but allow for other views also. It just seems like it's pretty dominating in that article and I think that should be looked at. I know you're trying to, not you, but I know the article, the, the theory's trying to be authoritative, but it seems like it's, it's dominating. I think that's going to cause some blowback as, as it's presented. I think that should be considered. The other things, some other things that I think are, are difficult or should be looked at, it's not one size fits all, the data collection. There's a whole section in there about that there's going to be data collection done of the effectiveness of the programs and that means students are going to be collected in that and I'm just wondering what the guidelines are for to protect that information. I know that there's hacking. Wow, it's already done. I think the PBIS approach was originally designed for those with disabilities, but it's not really meant for regular student population. I think there's some problems with that because there's difference in outcome, behavior outcomes with a disabled student and a general population student. And I think, I'm not sure that you can translate the, the process from the disability, the disabled population, population to the general population. There's more here. I don't know how much more time. Can I go through anymore or is that it?
That's it, but if you want to share some written information?
Sure.
Our email addresses are on the website or you can also provide it to Marilyn and she can get it to us.
I'll be glad to do that. I have just a few more things, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. I really appreciate your attempt to do this, but I do think there's some concerns.
Thank you. Next.
The next speaker is Linda Cypret Kilburn, followed by Susan Keel.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Hope everybody had a great holiday as we did, being such a large family. We had seven Christmas dinners. I was sharing with the doctor down there. As you know, my name is Linda Cypret Kilburn. Beju an inashna, a jawana nimki koi dishes nakas, she konodam for Kalamazoo River and Don Jaba. We're really excited, the Michigan Coalition Against Racism in Sports and Media, and we wanted to share this with you guys today. We were awarded and recognized by the state of Michigan for the work that we've been doing and we want to thank you folks along with past boards and superintendents and everybody that's helped support us. But I wanted to share this last paragraph. It says, "Special tribute, therefore, this document is signed to honor all of those associated with the Michigan Coalition Against Racism in Sports and Media for their impressive efforts partnering with the Michigan United in order to improve the quality of life of so many in the Kalamazoo community and throughout southwest Michigan. May they know of their gratitude for their tireless efforts on behalf of others." And I feel that this really is for all of us, everyone, no matter where you're at, Michigan, that have helped work and support this issue. This award, we feel, feel that is for everyone, not just us. So we wanted to share that with you today and say thank you very much for your efforts, personal and also as a board. The other thing I wanted to mention, which I'm sure you all know about, is the three bills that we have right now and ask that you continue to support them either as a board or personally. There's Senate Bill 487, which is to remove the art world from, from the public school systems, 646 and House Bill 5232. And we have some information that will be sent to you with that too, hopefully for phone calls and whatnot. So that's one of our main things that we're going to be working on this year is putting effort into educating people about that. Hope people will call to give more support for those bills so that we can get them out on the floors for hearing. And we're going to be doing that hopefully through education. We want to reach out more to administrators and teachers to help educate more on the subject, so we're looking for events and conferences and things like that, that we can get into to help spread the education on the subject. And I came across an article recently that was sent by another member of our group, Julie Dai, and it's entitled, "Experts, Racism Exists in Our School and Few Teachers Are Trained to Handle It." And it was a really good article. It's happening out in Utah, but it really touched home on the mascot issue. A lot of things that they were talking about, I could relate to on the things our children go through and what communities go through. So I've got copies for everybody on that also. But they're talking about anti-racism, basically versus diversity training. They say that racism isn't really, you know, touched bottom core with the diversity training and that educational associations and stuff and school boards should be looking more towards anti-racism workshops and things like that. So we're hoping that maybe this is something the board could look deeper into if you haven't. There was also a report that 80% of school teachers and administrators in the United States are white, according to the State of Racial Diversity in the Educator Workforce, and that's from the U.S. Department of Education. And they said that these educators need training to recognize and respond to racism in school. So that's what I, I was kind of focusing on. I wanted to share that information with you, with you guys and hopefully you can share it with other people. Maybe this is something that we could work on to get more anti-racism training and stuff in there because I think it really would help the mascot logo nickname issue so that people could better understand themselves and the issue because I've read a lot and I've experienced and seen it too, as it says in here, that people will feel guilty either from having more privileges or they don't want to feel like it's their fault that certain things happen when these issues arise. And so hopefully that would make them understand things better so that they could, you know, handle the issues better themselves and then maybe reach out and help other people or speak out when they see things aren't correctly, so. And I'll give these to you guys and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our final speaker is Susan Kyle. And Susan, if I'm mispronouncing your name, please correct me.
It's okay. You had it right the first time was Keel.
Keel.
Yeah, but I know it goes, you hear it pronounced either way, so. First of all, I just wanted to thank everyone for their time and service. I know when you have someone come and are to complain about something that you did, it's always good to, I do acknowledge, you know, everyone's time and efforts that you've put into our children in the state of Michigan and I know that you are looking for the, for the best, to do the best for everyone. So just, I'm actually a, well, former teacher and a parent in the Kent Intermediate School District, specifically my kids go to East Grand Rapids. And when I go through this, I'm sorry if I don't make a lot of eye contact, but I need to read it. So I'm going to go ahead and start. And the reason that I'm here today is to express my concerns and some concerns of other parents about the pre-Labor Day start waivers that have been passed. And so, as you know, the representatives of the people of the state of Michigan enacted the post-Labor Day school start law to benefit the state of Michigan and its citizens. One of the main reasons law was passed was to help support tourism in our state that brings millions of dollars to our lake communities and to the entire state. Many of us have spent a great deal of time in these communities and realize the value of the last two weeks of August compared to the first two weeks of June. Families travel up north into lakes during July and August because the water temperature's at its warmest, especially at the end of August. The difference in the number of people traveling and the climate between June and August cannot be understated. The business brought to these two towns during peak season is crucial to their existence. It creates jobs that supports families and provides revenue to the cities and schools. It is important that we continue to support our fellow Michiganders. Unfortunately, in my opinion, school districts are attempting to circumvent this law by applying for early start waivers. Evidence to support shifting the school year to improve academic outcomes is very weak at best. Specifically, my home intermediate school district of Kent County, the Kent ISD applied for a two-week pre-Labor Day start waiver to match the starting dates of the local community college they partner with and the high school semester before holiday break to provide more instruction time prior to assessments. However, when I confirm the start dates for these colleges, three start only one week prior to Labor Day and the fourth starts after Labor Day. Although these are wonderful programs, there are only about four, I believe around 500 students countywide out of over 100,000 students in Kent County participating in these programs. This equates to 0.5% of the students in Kent County, whereas there are about 60,000 elementary students that will be required to miss the best weeks of summer and be schooled, begin school before college students do. The very kids who should be swimming and enjoying community pools in our 3,000 miles of beautiful shoreline, not to mention the remaining middle school and high school students. Additionally, the week before the winter holiday is very busy for most families. This is not the time for high school students to try and concentrate on final exams. As for assessment testing, I realize the state, Michigan added five days to the school year several years ago and so I, you know, wonder why not just to push the assessment state testing one week later in the spring or the window, I guess, for assessment. And also if adding more days to the beginning of the school year will supposedly make a difference in assessment results, then the state is essentially creating unfair and invalid comparisons of assessment outcomes across the state by approving these waivers. The decision based on a small minority of students, not the majority, and the stated reasons are not sufficient enough to warrant a deviation from the rest of the state and ignoring the will of the people. The submission and approval of these waivers is in justice to the citizens of Michigan. Waivers are intended as a temporary resolution, not a means to schedule the local school calendar for years to come and to avoid a state law. Parents in our community are not being notified of the intent to submit these requests until they are approved by the state and local school boards. And let me just clarify one thing in my situation. East Grand Rapids did not participate in the waiver for three years because we had a teacher contract, so this is now new to our area. There were no informational meetings held prior to these decisions. The parents in all decisions in the community should be prepared, protected by the state law and duly informed of any changes ahead of time. We all want to do what is best for our children and students, but there are better solutions for improving student achievement. This is an attempt at a one-size-fits-all, quick fix to improve assessment scores when real learning comes from a strong curriculum, life experience and basic needs being met. These are the areas we should be focusing on and making sure every child has access to. There are hundreds of well-performing school districts in Michigan that continue to follow the post-Labor Day start, start law and are able to provide a quality education to all their students. Many school administrators are placing the unwarranted emphasis on test scores at the expense of other important child and family experiences as parents and educators are focused on raising children, not statistics. So thank you for your time and consideration. Thank you.
I agree with you. I'm in support of that.
Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of regular in committee of the whole meeting of December 12, 2017. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as stated? Been moved and supported? All those in, I'm sorry, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Here's. I reported the co-presidents. Patrick, would you like to go first?
I have nothing to report that wasn't said already this morning.
Great, I agree. I just want to reiterate how great it is to finally have a school dashboard out in public. And Tom had a great suggestion, which I'd like to recommend to the department, and that is to present, give a similar presentation to the education committees in the House and Senate so that they can see this as well. Next up is, we're supportive of the superintendent who is not in attendance, so we'll move to the Michigan Teacher of the Year, who is?
Stepped out.
Stepped out. Okay. Well, I guess we'll move on.
We can come back.
We can come back. Yeah, we can come back to that.
There he is.
You're up.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to take a few minutes today to talk about something that I've been thinking about quite a bit lately. And actually, I think the beginning of this was, was the Board of Ed meeting where Lou Glaser came here to talk to us a little bit about 21st century skills and what we need to do to prepare our students for 21st century skills. And so I think in order to think about that, it might be worthwhile to first think about where we're coming from, which I'm going to call the factory model for education. And within the factory model of education, which we used for many, many years, we would take our inputs, which are our students, and we would put them through this school system, sort of in the hopes that at the end of all of this schooling, we would create some sort of standardized product, which was like a student who was ready for college, right? And in that factory model, we had sort of a standard process for creating this standardized end product. And in education, I think that that means that we had standardized curriculum for students, we had standardized instruction for how it should be delivered, and then standardized assessments at the end so that we could measure whether or not we produced this output that we were hoping for. And to be honest, this model for education actually worked quite well for many, many years and for the, for the job market that we were trying to fill, it was a pretty decent model for creating a workforce. Well, as Lou Glaser mentioned earlier this year, that's not the current workforce that we're trying to send our students into in this world today. And so the question is, what, what adjustments do we have to make within, within the schools in order to prepare students for this 21st century world? And I've been doing some work with teachers lately where I've been, been talking about this idea and thinking about what can we do in our classroom so that we can actually recognize and acknowledge the differences that our students have and ultimately in the end create different, a different end product? Because the world that we are sending our students out into, we have, we have difficult and pressing issues right now that one-size-fits-all solutions will not work for. So we need to create a diversity of, of end products. We need to have students that graduate with technical computer skills. We need to graduate students with negotiating and collaborative skills. We need to graduate students with, with artistic skills. We need a diversity of, of skills and abilities to be able to solve some of the problems that we currently face in society today. And so the suggestions that I have up here, I'm not going to go through these in detail because these are mostly teacher-focused. Like, these are suggestions that I would give to teachers to try and create these, these diversity of end products. And I'm going to mention just a couple of them, like teacher, like teacher ideas, but then at the end of it, I promise I'll bring it back to the State Board of Ed and say, okay, where, where do we fit into this, this, this big picture? So my first suggestion is to provide students with, with choice in their learning. And there's a lot of different ways that we can do that. We can provide them choice in what courses they take. We can also provide them choice within the course that they're taking. So within my math class that students are sitting in, where can I provide them choice in their learning? So maybe I assign them a project where they get to actually decide what the question is that they're going to try and answer by collecting some data, right? And by providing that choice, students get bought into what they're, what they're learning about, but then they're also learning about something that is relevant and important to them. Oh, one of the other big ideas there too is about assessment. So, you know, we talk about the factory model with standardized assessments. What if in our classrooms, we had a variety of different options for assessments? So I taught a particular unit and at the end of the unit, I wanted students to be able to demonstrate that they had learned something in that unit. And I said they could write a paper, they could make an oral presentation, they could make a PowerPoint, they could take a test, and I provided them a, a choice as far as what assessment they were going to use to demonstrate that they had learned the content from that particular unit. The second suggestion I give to teachers is to keep things interesting and relevant. And for this, we, we have to get to know our students. So if I get to know my students and I know what my students care about, I can tailor my instruction to those particular students. And so that takes time. That takes time and energy to build those relationships with students. And then the students can have some sort of say as far as the ideas that, that we, that we learn about in, in class. And then the third suggestion that I have here is about the instructional model. And in the factory model, we have standardized instruction. Teachers are given sort of explicit directions on how they're, to deliver the content. And I think that we're, we're finding now that this just, this one-size-fits-all type of instruction doesn't work for all of our students, right? The traditional lecture style where the teacher lectures and then the students practice their problems, that works just fine for a certain part of our student population, but it certainly is not serving all of our students well. And so we need to open up our minds about what types of instruction we're providing for students. So I want to have projects where students are working in groups, where they have to collaborate with each other, where they have to talk and they have to problem solve and think and reason, rather than it's just me standing at the front of the room and being the, the person who has all the knowledge who's trying to give the students all of that knowledge. And so when you look at these three suggestions, you're going to see that all three of these are fighting against that factory model, which I mentioned. So we talk about standardized curriculum and standardized instruction and standardized assessment, and I'm pushing back on all three of those ideas. And this isn't happening in, in all of the, the classrooms in the state of Michigan. And that's because there's a risk involved here. Teachers have to take a risk in order to move into these ideas here because ultimately in the end, their students are going to be given a standardized assessment and they are going to be evaluated based on that student performance and their school is going to be evaluated. And so classroom teachers are always fighting against this like end goal of standardized test scores and it makes it harder to take risks like I mentioned here. And so they get stuck in the standardized instruction with the standardized curriculum and the standardized assessments. So where does the State Board of Education fit into this? I, I think there's two things that we can think about as a State Board of Education that might play into some decisions that would affect what teachers do in their classroom. And it's about curriculum and it's about assessment. And when I say curriculum, I'm going to turn that into standards because sometimes we do get to think about standards at the State Board of Ed level. And we did have this, this sort of recent move to the Common Core standards. And I'll tell you what I like about the Common Core standards is that we moved away from standards being a list of items that kids have to learn or memorize into a list of skills and thinking and reasoning that students need to be able to do. And for me as a teacher, that provides me a lot more flexibility on what I'm going to do with my students in my classroom. If all I'm trying to get are certain skills and thinking and reasoning, there's a lot of ways that I can get at that. If instead I have a list of content that I have to cover, I'm going to be very limited in the instruction that I can do as, as a teacher. So when the standards question comes up again at this table, because it will at some point, I urge you to consider standards which focus more on thinking and reasoning and skills rather than lists of things for students to memorize. And then the second thing is about assessment, and I think Tom brought this up earlier in the meeting today, is that the amount of importance that we place on standardized tests ultimately has a huge impact on what teachers do in their classrooms, especially at the high school level in mathematics. We're very aware of what our school's SAT scores are and that's a priority. And if that becomes too much of a priority, then everything that we do becomes focused on that. And then we get limited on our flexibility on how we teach, on what we teach and how we assess. And I, and I've seen the results of that in, in my own classroom over the last 15 years. So as we move forward as a State Board of Ed, I urge you to think about the standards that we, that we choose as a, as a state and also the, the assessment, what is the assessment that we use, but also what importance we place on, on that assessment. And I'm not advocating for, for getting rid of assessments. I truly believe assessments have huge value, but it's about the relative importance of that to other things that we also know are important for our students. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Luke.
Any questions?
Luke, you're blowing my mind.
Well, I think the theme of the day is rethinking accountability measures, so that fits perfectly with.
Right. I mean, that's exactly what we did.
Yep.
The dashboard. We backed off.
Particularly, to give more flexibility, I mean, to, to make it so that there is more flexibility. They think is best with kids in. I love that you're focused on interest, get the kids engaged. I mean, so when you take this out, are you taking this, are you, what's the theme? I'd love to hear. Have you talked to teachers about this, these three things?
Yeah, so I, I wrote a blog post for Memic and I put a lot of these ideas on there.
On Memic or something?
Yeah, it's on Memic's website. You can check it out. It's a little bit more hashed out than what you see here. I also did a TED Talk a couple of months ago called Craft Education. They got into this, this idea. And I, and I think that They got into this idea, and I think that teachers are excited about the idea, but a little bit afraid to move too far into it, right? Because there's that risk. I mean, it's a risk to move to more progressive style of education, because you're not guaranteed those SAT results that you were getting previously through the old instructional model and the old assessments. But I think, in general, teachers are excited about the ideas.
And I'm sure if you ask students, they'd be very excited about the idea of having some choice.
Of course. I mean, and that gets into, like, the student buy-in, and like, it's a lot easier to get student buy-in when you're teaching something that they care about, that they've made the decision about, rather than, hey, kids, I've got this list of 14 learning targets for today, and we're going to learn these 14 things, and here's how we're going to learn them all.
So, how does this fit into play with the whole idea of educational pathways? Because technically, your version of teaching and educating, is it still focused on a set of principles that would be good for any kid to put into play into any field, or is it translating to this one direction?
Yeah, so, this is a really important idea to think about, because there's a balance to this, right? I'm all for this pathways to different outcomes, right? I want, it's not a factory model. We need to have multiple pathways. And that's all built into the top 10 and 10, right? And we've thought about a lot of different pathways for kids. But like, we also have the responsibility to provide some sort of, like, core set of thinking skills. And so, the question is, like, where do we draw the line? Like, do we want to set out the curriculum and say, you have to learn this, 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 and this by the time you leave high school? And I would say, no. There are some big ideas that we need to make sure that you leave school with, so that you can be an informed citizen. But at some point, or at many points, there has to be pathways. There has to be different pathways, because we're not trying to create 100,000 of the same kid. We're trying to create a variety of different graduates that can go out into the world and do a variety of different things in the world.
And the relevancy of the testing, like you said, would be lower in terms of how you pursue your passions in that plan, if you will, because it's kind of like, what if you go to this pathway based on your test score, and then you're a senior in high school, and it's like, wait, I'm actually better suited here? Do we just go shucks? We really, more or less, prepared you for that?
Right, so, that's like, you know, the SAT test is a good measure for, like, a kid who wants to go to college to become an engineer. And like, the SAT is a good goal for them, and that's a good pathway for them, but that's not necessarily the same pathway for the person who wants to be a graphic designer, or a musician, or a tradesman, or whatever it is.
Or what if they just don't know at all what they want to do? And they just, they're not there yet, you know? Like, are we thinking about that, too?
I could talk about this for hours, because this is so, I think, is critical for education. If you talk to Lou Glaser, he'll talk to you about rock climbing. I mean, it's, there is no...
A pathway sounds like a ladder, the old way of doing things.
I mean, it's a pathway to rock climbing, which is going to be all over the country. We don't know. He said they may want to do this, this, and this. They may want to do something that isn't, you know, the 50% of jobs that haven't been created yet, or decided, or even thought of yet. You know, those are there, but really, it is that core. And then, after that, you know, look where their passions are, or their interests, or their giftings or something.
About where the opportunities are.
There could be a core, but, I mean, to, you know, these pathways, there is a danger that you kind of are very narrowly focusing people and kids. And by the way, the SAT, so, I agree that the teacher evaluations, that's why I'm working, and I'd love for others to... I'll try to get that, I'm trying to get a sponsor to get that out of the statute. The other thing is the SAT, because I've heard that also, like, what's the other? I don't know if you go to, you know, they're state-funded, tell these schools, look, we're putting so much darn emphasis on this. I mean, you know, they're autonomous, and I don't want to tell them what to do, but, you know, there's nothing that says they, I mean, why do they put so much focus on this? You know, that is perverting some of the way in the national effort. Or you just make sure that they're just educating, letting the parents know, or having a... It may not be as important as it looks.
Well, Lou Glaser said they're not predictive of how well you do in school, but yet, we use them to measure readiness for college, and so, and they use them in the trades now, because a lot of the trades want a standardized test. One of the reasons is to avoid, to me, it gives a...
Objective?
Yeah, an objective, you know, objective in a sense, but they don't have to deal with discrimination suits, like, you discriminated against me, those, oh, but this test just told us who to pick, but the test itself, it has its own biases built into it. It just seems neutral on its surface. So, but I do think that there are, as I'm trying to drill my 10-year-old on his multiplication tables, that there are things you have to memorize. There are basic concepts that, you know, especially about, I think we should have more on civics, we should have more on understanding, you know, how our government works, and, you know, and on history, and all that kind of stuff, so that there's a common understanding about facts, hopefully. And I think that's really central, so that, I think, in some way, there needs to be ways to get that information, not necessarily that it has to be direct instruction, but that they have to master certain things that I think are just, not just about a job, but just about being a citizen, and those are some things I think that need to be in there. But I like the idea of giving teachers the professional respect that they're due. I think a lot of the reforms that we've been living through completely de-professionalized, some more than others, and had a distrust of teachers, and felt like they had to tell teachers what to teach, how to teach, how to pace it, how to do this, and then hold them accountable for test scores, and that was it, you know? So, I like, your ideas seem to make a lot of sense to me, but I see it as a power struggle against the people who are so, sort of like, now the status quo with these tests, and how to, how to move that, how to move away from that. I think it's, I think a lot of it is like, just you trying to get rid, get the teacher eval test. I mean, a lot of it is a matter of having the political will or the leverage to make that happen, and, you know, I think talking about it's really good, but at some point, there has to be some way to put some pressure to make it happen, so.
All right, well, thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the state and federal legislative update. Marty Ackley, Director of Public and Government Affairs, will provide an update on the legislative issues at the state and federal level.
Hi, thank you. The legislature is back in session this week after taking its holiday break, and so, there are no bills taken up in the last three weeks, of which to discuss. The state board's legislative committee did meet on Thursday, the 21st of December. I think there are two members who were in attendance for that, and so, there wasn't much to discuss in that meeting, because no legislative action was occurring. There are, there's a big package of bills, which you're all aware of, that the Michigan Pathways Alliance Career CTE Bills have passed the House, they're now in the Senate. The Senate has a couple of its own bills that it's pushing, and so, that seems to be the big interest right now, is to accelerate the bills that are, would implement the Michigan Pathways Alliance recommendations. Also, on the 24th of January, a meeting has been posted for the Subcommittee on the Michigan Mayor Curriculum and the Senate Education Committee. We will have two people testifying, Patty Cantu, who's our Director in the Office of Career and Tech Ed, and Linda Forward, the Director of Office of Education Improvement and Innovation, as well as Roger Curtis, who's the Director of the Michigan Department of Talent and Economic Development. We have testified several times before that Subcommittee. I'm guessing that they want to, they want to see the impact of career tech ed on the Michigan mayor curriculum. So, this is just testimonial, and there's no report coming out of this Subcommittee as yet. I think they're still gathering information on a number of things dealing with the Michigan mayor curriculum. Other than that, that's really what's happening. We have the state of the state, the governor of the state is on January 23rd, and his executive budget is coming out the beginning of February. So, we'll keep you apprised of that.
Michelle, and then Tom?
Oh, so, I was hearing some stuff, some discussion about bills around substitute teachers, is that...
There was a Senate bill, I'm sorry, it was not a Senate bill, it was a, it would reduce the number of hours, House Bill 4069, reduce the number of hours for substitute teachers from 90 hours to 60 hours for an associate's degree, and I believe they also have to have 4,000 hours in, at a professional trade. This is the idea of getting second career people who want to go into teaching, allow them to come and sub, or allow them to come and teach to fill teacher shortage areas.
So, they could sub or teach?
Yeah, they can sub and teach, right.
Like, long-term or permanent?
Substitutes are, a lot of times, as you heard this morning...
Right, they did the long-term, but they could hire them as a teacher?
There are pathways for them to do that.
Yeah, but they would have to get a certification with an internship. Okay. I didn't know if that was going to, that was being changed.
That passed the House, and then has been referred to the Senate Committee on Education.
Okay, okay.
Do you have an idea of the number of teachers for shortage in the state of Michigan?
No, we don't, in fact, there was a story that they just asked us about, a reporter asked, and we don't keep track of substitutes, and we don't keep track of...
Like, local, so, yeah, you would have to, that would be a reporting measure, and you don't have that.
Right. But there is a big shortage. In some school districts, there's up to 50 teachers. And subs, phenomenal. It's really, really a serious problem.
Yeah, I know, so, I know that Dr. Z brought up, you know, like, cracking down on the absenteeism, but I would also say, look at why they are absent. I know, and a lot of teachers who are on antidepressants right now, and that are totally stressed out, that are with the conditions right now, and they may, some, you know, some of the charters may not have the same sick days in the banks, so if you compared one to the other, which I think the Mackinac Center did, it'll look different, but I think it's worth, like, asking, what's the underlying cause of the absences, you know? And instead of just punishing people for being sick, you know?
Yeah.
The Michigan mayor? What was it you were saying about Michigan mayor? It's not a known person.
It's his Subcommittee. Right, he's got, he's asked for our CTE Director, our Director of Office of Innovation, and Linda Forward, as well as the TED Director to come in and talk.
He was opening it up to more than...
Oh, he is, right, but this meeting is about that. The meeting on the 24th, he's brought, he's asking for, yes.
I think he's more, perhaps more favorable, what Luke was saying, I think, or at least going along those lines of... Be looking at how much we require not screen, pick up their students up to make a thing if they have interesting passions. So, I think, when I talk to him, it might be a positive angle.
Yeah, now, this meeting is about, he's asked for testimony about that area, but he's had several meetings, and we have come to testify, as well as people from the field, to talk about the flexibility of the Michigan mayor curriculum and the purpose of it, yeah.
Yeah, I wanted to add more to why teachers are absent. As I just mentioned, there is a shortage of a whole bunch of teachers. Subs do not want to come to many of these classrooms. And because of the shortage, the classes that don't have teachers, they divide those students and give them to the other teachers. So, therefore, the teachers end up with 35, 40 students to one person. And then, those combinations of classrooms have the newcomers, which have never been in school, and then the bilingual, in many different languages, and then a few of the local students. So, you're right, there's a lot of teachers that go on mental leaves, stress leaves, and the class size is phenomenal, it's lack of teachers. And I have talked to different universities, and in some universities, the collective education has the lowest enrollment. So, there, people just don't want to go into the teaching field because of lack of respect, many, many reasons, but, yeah. We're trying to get to be the top 10 in 10 years, and we're doing so many great things, but there's a lot of problems in the schools. And another thing, that if you're absent, a teacher just told me that she was, points were deleted from her evaluation because she was, she had surgery, so, therefore, she wasn't in school, so, they deleted some points. And many teachers work for their highly effective, you know, we want to be the, and so, she was not, I think she was not even effective, she was just, what is the, I don't...
Effectively.
Yeah, yeah, because she was sick, and she wasn't in school. So, there's just so many things that teachers have to endure.
All right, any other questions for Marty? Thank you, Marty.
Thanks, Marty.
Lupe and Nikki, do you have anything for Nasby?
Excuse me, I do have another one. The gun bill, could you tell us, did it go to the Supreme Court for a ruling or something? Did I read that right? Or are we with the gun issue?
Well, that bill is still in the Judiciary Committee, and it's not, there's no inkling in the House Judiciary, and there's no inkling that it's moving soon.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, there's also a bill on...
Lupe and Nikki, do you have anything from Nasby?
I do not, Melissa.
I do, I do, I have, and I sent all of you the email, because there's two committees that they really want every state to participate in, and that's the Government Affairs Committee and the Public Ed Positions Committee. And so, and it has to be approved by the board. So, is there anybody interested in either or? And you saw the descriptions for each one?
Yeah, and I've served on the Government Affairs Committee in the past, and it was a great learning opportunity, it really was. My only concern for myself is the time to go to the meetings.
Well, most of, many of the meetings, you can join by phone.
Really? Because that wasn't the case when I was a member before.
Remember when Kathy was, just how she went to the meetings, she by phone? So, yeah, that's permissible.
Oh. Well, does that change anybody's mind?
Yeah, because we were, what's the date today? The 8th?
9th.
9th? Well, we were supposed to tell them yesterday, but I don't think it matters, but they do want participation.
Well, if you can do it by phone, I can serve on the Government Affairs Committee. I know we can, I mean, we could all serve on it if we wanted to, because we're not limited to one person, right?
No, they just want one for each committee from each state.
And the commitment is what, per month, or what is it?
I don't know if it's monthly or not, but, you know, I don't know.
So, I guess I'd think about it, and then I'd want to get more details.
Well, I think before, it was like quarterly, but back then, you had to go to the meeting, and that was a hindrance for me.
Well, I think it's the Legislative Committee meeting that they would like people to be there, especially these committees, but even I don't, as the zone leader, I don't have to go to...
What is public education positions? What does that committee do?
Well, I sent you the description, but I'm imagining there's a position that we have to take, such as, like, the Legislative Committee here, and we have input into those positions.
I think it's kind of like a platform, if I'm not mistaken.
Right.
I can find it, if you want me to read it. Okay, quicker than me.
Yeah, I think, I think our... Yeah, I think, I think our state is a vital state, and we're doing a lot of innovative, great things in education, and I think it behooves us to have participation in these two committees.
Do we need to vote on that?
Yeah, well, the, yeah, it has to be, well, not approved, but you know, everybody has to be in consensus that you would be a good representative for us in the Government Affairs Committee and whomever it was.
This is just education.
Yes, I think so.
As opposed to what? I'm happy to serve on the Government Affairs Committee.
Okay.
Do you need a motion or something?
No, no.
Okay, I mean, as long as there's a consensus.
Just a consensus, it's, yeah.
Anyone else want to serve on that?
Just kidding.
Why don't you serve in the Public Ed?
Me? No, I can't. I'm adopting a kid today. I can't, I got another, I got like...
She's adopting another child.
I think, I just take on a whole bunch more responsibilities, yeah.
I'm open to it, but I just have to look into it more.
Yeah.
All right, so if Nikki decides after today that she's interested, are we all good with...
We're all good with that.
Yes, let me know as soon as you, like, you have it overnight, okay?
Sure.
So we can turn these names in. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then I also wanted, well, I have the floor, to remind you that there's that Literacy Summit in Grand Rapids, and the Literacy Center of Western Michigan is putting it on, and the emphasis is third grade reading. So they have a real good lineup of speakers.
I heard the keynote speaker is going to be excellent.
When is this, the details?
This is Thursday, January 25th.
Okay, in Grand Rapids?
In Grand Rapids, at the Grand Valley State University Everheart Center.
And this is for, what did you say?
The Literacy Center of Western Michigan is sponsoring it.
Okay, all right.
I do have a question, I think that falls under legislative. And it goes back to the statement, I'm just reading through the statement that we did on the lead monitoring and testing in schools. And so just, I know that we had the EPA that was here last time, and I don't know if MBE has did anything else to move us further. And then I know we talked about the $4 million that was once available, and we talked about that funding being made that was appropriated for the previous fiscal year. And so I know in Flint, we were looking at doing some model programming, and that hasn't quite come to fruition, and there's been some back and forth there. So I don't know if MBE is going to do anything else, or have you all been in any conversations? I don't know if you have.
As far as the money is concerned, the $4 million, the supplemental, $2 million of that $4 million to do that model programming ahead of time. Another $2 million will...
Okay.
With regards to the EPA and that conversation, I thought the Board had agreed at the last, I guess that last one, or the agenda planning session, that there needed to be some conversation amongst Board members about after the EPA person presented, the direction that the Board wanted to head.
And are you willing to help me to pull that together?
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else?
By the way, we're having water problems in my part of the state, too.
What's going on? What's going on?
There's that, what's the name, Wolverine?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, it's on the news.
So a lot of people are having problems with their water.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They're being sued left and right.
Anything else for Legislative Committee?
I did have a question. I had heard some discussion about legislation to, around, I don't know, it's vouchers, but around tax credits for private education. Is that something that, I'm just wondering the status of that, or, do you know what I'm talking about? Yes, at the state level. I think it was introduced...
It'd have to be a concurrent resolution, because it'd have to amend the state constitution.
But it was, so the tax credit, but I thought someone had... It's like, so you're...
It'd be at federal level.
Right, I know, but so at the federal level, my understanding is with the tax bill that went through, that was part of the tax bill that went through that allows for...
Oh, for a tax credit?
Tax credit for private school, or, and so there was, I thought there was someone in the legislature that was proposing...
Federal tax bill law that went through allows families to use 529 plan.
Right, that's what it was, okay, thank you. But it's like, it's a tax shelter, I mean, it's to avoid taxes, so it, so they, so, and I thought there was some legislation proposed to facilitate that in the state, but no, yeah.
Well, there's going to be, there's a discussion that the impact of the federal law would have increased taxes at the, for state...
Yeah, yeah, no, no, this was different, yeah, that's different from what Kelly's, yeah, doing.
Can you just look into that, if there's anything along that, let us know. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the Board wishes to have removed from the consent agenda prior to the vote? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. It's been moved, support? Moved and supported, all those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Post nay, motion carries. So in the consent agenda, we have a special item that we'd like to take a moment to point out, that the consent agenda includes adoption of a resolution honoring Susan Roman. Susan is Deputy Superintendent of the P-20 System of Student Transitions, and she's been with the Michigan Department of Education since 2012 and is retiring, unfortunately, we're all sad to say, at the end of this month.
You're jealous.
Totally jealous. So we wanted to say congratulations to you, Susan, and thank you so much for all of the work you've done on behalf of the littlest children in the state of Michigan. You will be very, very much missed, but we're pleased for you that you're going to be doing exciting things with your life and beyond the walls of MBE.
I'm going to actually have a life.
You're going to have a life, and we're all so jealous and very happy for you. So in honor of the State Board of Education, and on behalf of the State Board of Education, I would like to present you with this resolution and with our sincere thanks and gratitude for everything you have done.
Thank you.
A tear between the roses? Rose between the horns.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do you have anything you'd like to say?
Yeah. I don't have a lot I want to say, but I suspect my perspective and coming here to work at MBE is a little different. And the way I got here, I'm not an educator, and I had worked in the private sector, and then basically fell in love with early childhood. So what I would have to say is, and I'm probably going to cry, this is probably the best part of my entire career, is the time spent here. And most people, especially my philanthropic friends, used to rass me, "I can't believe you're going to work for government." It has been one of the most fulfilling parts of my career, and I had great opportunities, but it's really, it's really been incredible to see people gel around an issue. And quite honestly, the part I really liked the best was the last, I don't remember how many months it's been, when it was four D's and four Rs. And the conversation changed a little bit, but it changed to me in an incredibly positive way because we got rid of that, because it was pretty lopsided before, and so it was eight people working on education. And so I thank you for keeping me around long enough to see that part, because it was pretty lopsided, and I have really enjoyed watching the Board struggle with things and come to what I always feel the best answer for Michigan. And so I encourage you to keep going and to keep...
Thank you for yours.
But that's, I mean, it's really been interesting, because everybody was like, oh my, it's going to be four R's, nothing's going to get done, and blah, 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 blah. And, you know, quite honestly, I've enjoyed that part of it being four R's more than the last X number of years that I was here, because it changed where it was people working with people for kids. So thank you for ending my career on that high note, where it was not totally politicized, and it was really about people sitting around the table trying to figure out how to do best for kids. Thank you.
Any additional comments by State Board of Education members?
Well, I want to thank Susan 110 times. You know, she's from Grand Rapids, did you hear that? She's from Grand Rapids, so I've been fortunate, I didn't know her in Grand Rapids. I had to come to Lansing to meet Susan. But we became real good friends, and so now I hope I'll get to see more of her.
I thought you were UPR.
Well, that's where I grew up.
Oh, see, I get to...
That's my name, adult, adult, then I have to work.
I get it.
So I ended up in Grand Rapids.
Yeah, are we on comments?
Yes.
So I just wanted to say again how much I appreciate the hard work on the dashboard, and that I'm very, very pleased with the outcome. And I know that either this process, you know, will be improving. And again, like I said before, that's not something that you have with an AAF. You don't have improvements, you have an AAF in stone, and that's the formula. This is something that I think can just continue to get better, and I... I think we're going to lead the way nationally. I was asked by the press about, you know, what about those people that are still wanting AAF? I hear it's bubbling up. I really believe that if they really look at this without, you know, any preconceived notions, I mean, before, it was AAF or nothing. They couldn't understand, I got people with the dashboard, what is it? So now they have this, and I really believe... That if they truly look at it... All the way from the governor down to legislators, that they will put aside that whole passion for AAF and say, this really is a better way of doing accountability and getting information out to the parents and to everybody. Taxpayers. Legislators, everybody, so I'm...
Any other comments? All right, so just a programming note, next month, we are not in Lansing, remember. Our next meeting is February 13th at 9:30 a.m. at the Wayne Risa, and then followed by Wednesday, March 14th, a regular meeting back here. So remember, next month, we are not in Lansing, we're at Wayne Risa. If there are specific items the Board would like to include in future meeting agendas, please let us know, let someone on the Agenda Planning Committee know. We'll be working the next few weeks to finalize the agenda for next month's meeting. And with that, we can entertain a motion to adjourn a good 45 minutes early.
Motion to adjourn?
Support it, all of you, say aye.
Aye, aye.
All right, see you next month.
All right.